Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome all to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Town Montgomery Planning Board for Monday, February ten.
There's a wooden one over there.
Twenty twenty. There are agendas on the front desk for anyone who'd like to follow along this evening. First, as we always do, we have a time, a ten minutes set aside for comment session for items on tonight's agenda. Anyone would like to make a comment? I know Kristen Brown had some comments she wanted to make, or...
I got seniority.
Okay, fine.
John Brown, Town of Montgomery. What I want to say is, I hope we all don't repeat what happened at our last regular meeting with the Skavisky project. I know that a number of you felt uncomfortable with what was going on that night, and I have to say that the audience and the residents really felt uncomfortable seeing what happened with what appeared to be side room deals and so forth. Well, let's not stay on that, but instead get to what is the root cause of the problem? The root cause of the problem is last-minute information coming in from your applicants. And I think it's completely unreasonable when applicants bring in information a short time before meetings in which they ask you to act on things. When I was sitting in your chairs, I experienced it, so I know what you guys are going through. And in some cases, back then, it was standard to bring it in on a Friday before a holiday weekend and then ask you to take action on it on the following Tuesday or something like that. In some cases, it's days before. I think you set the record last time by them submitting on the day of the meeting. And as much as Andrew's got a big team of people doing it to try and look at it in a timely fashion, it's impossible to do a thorough job on reviewing those documents and really reaching a valid opinion when you haven't had a chance to digest them, talk to other people about it. So what I'm suggesting is that you set a precedent, and in fact, I think SECRE actually allows you to do that, that if you do not have complete information a certain period of time before action is being considered, that that action is delayed. And that action, I know in the case of finding statements, at least when I used to look at SECRE, you had twenty days from the time you receive complete information. So my suggestion is that you make a very strict rule. That last-minute stuff is just not accepted. You need time for your consultants to look at it, for you to look at it, and also, more importantly, the public to have a chance to see it because they're a key part of this process of providing you input from what actually goes on in the field. And that can't be done with one day, two days, or even a week. So I'm suggesting something even like twenty days from when information is received before you take action at a meeting. And certainly, that is a responsible thing to do. The jobs you have, you're gonna get pressured by applicants unmercifully in the next month or so, especially with the moratorium coming up. Everybody's gonna try to cram stuff into you to try and get some kind of thing approved or whatever. So you're gonna have even more pressure than you've had. But realize that when you're making decisions, it affects not just that project, but for the people in this community, basically, it affects their lifetime investment in their property and their lifetime interest in this town. So a one day, two days, even a week is not a long time to wait when you have the magnitude of those decisions on your shoulders. Thank you.
Hi, Kristen Brown, Town Council. So in our last Town Council meeting, our engineer, Mike Aiello, came up to the board and stated that our wastewater treatment plant is at capacity. Our capacity meaning hundred thousand, hundred thirty thousand gallons per day. So we, today, actually, the board was supposed to do a tour of all of our existing infrastructure facilities. One of those was hopefully going to be the wastewater treatment plant, looking at our existing, we'll call it the STP-1 plant, as well as the Baxter plant. From what I've been told, so since then, we all know about the ice and snowstorm that happened this morning, so the tour unfortunately was canceled. I made a phone call into Mike Aiello to get more of a handle on the situation, so this is what I have to tell you guys, is that our plant is at capacity according to the average daily usage in 2019. That's how they monitor it. There are INI issues currently. We did, we did approve to do a camera, send a camera down there and find out where the INI issues are. According to what he said, we're Sewer District, and I apologize if I get these flipped, but I believe it's Sewer District Two comes into Sewer District One. There's an increase in hydrogen sulfide gas, which eats out the concrete pipes that are in the ground. And what happens is we get INI infiltration into the system. And that can be quite a large amount. But when we sent the camera down to take a look at these pipes, the problem is there wasn't the infiltration rate that needed to be known for us to actually make the fix. So I gave you guys a lot of information, but my point of the story is that if we are at capacity, my concern is what's going to move forward? I mean, there's construction across from Shopright with that warehouse going in. There's projects that you guys have already approved, as well as projects that are currently on the docket. So my job as a town board is to look at financing. We do have a design, I was told, that's into DEC, done by Bethany Ghandi, to ref, to build a new plant. We will be, I will be discussing with the board how to look at our existing plant, but I'm not sure how, where you guys are, as you guys are approving the projects that now come into the plant. And I'm not sure legally, Rich, this is a question for you, if there is an option to hook into the plant or hook into our wastewater treatment lines, if these projects legally have to, which could influence the decisions of how things move forward. Is that true? Is that a true statement? Okay. So, but in the case that the Baxter and the STP-1 plant that I'm speaking with have not been updated, my question to you guys is how future DEIS are gonna be handled, and that's something for you guys to consider as a board. I'm just coming up here as a point of information for you guys to understand what we're dealing with in the town board. There are options to make remediations to the Baxter as well. The Baxter plant's twenty years old. So bringing that online is gonna take money and it's gonna take resources, as well as looking at our existing plant and options that we can improve on that. But that's something that our job is with the town board. But again, this, this directly influences you guys' decisions in moving forward with projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have, as long as it's short, because we have a meeting at seven thirty. One person, please. Hi.
Hi, my name is Linda Mitchell. I'm just a little disappointed at one item that's not on the agenda tonight. I believe at the town board meeting last Thursday, language was put forth by the town attorneys for proposed language for the moratorium. And there was much discussion about, among members of the town board, they weren't all in agreement about everything. That's fine. I think most of the town residents understands that it is a process, process, that they ultimately, after much discussion, decided to, to send the language over to the planning board so that when there is public comment and then a final vote for the language, the language could be in accordance with what is with for the planning board. So I don't know what happened and why it didn't make it to the agenda, because I think the town board was gonna take it up again next week so that we can get it on an agenda. The residents of the Town of Montgomery have waited a long, long time for this to move forward. Excuse me. Now it seems like it's moving at a snail's pace and there's yet another impediment. So I just wanted to put you on notice of that, and maybe you can talk to somebody in the town board and see what happened with that so that we can move the idea of a moratorium forward.
We just got the draft law today as a board. It was forwarded to us, but we just received it, like hours ago. So we haven't even had a chance with the meeting tonight, haven't had a chance.
Well, unlike John, who wants you to take time, you know, twenty-one days or whatever to look at things, this is a little bit different because you're just looking at proposed language that's gonna go, you know, up on agenda for town comments. So I hope you'll take a look at it, you know, time is of the moment. I'd rather residents feel. Thank you.
I'm just, I'll be really brief because I hope you will read those. I have, tomorrow night, we have the HPC meeting. I'm gonna bring up both of these topics. One is that a well that was on the seventeen K property in the Resorts World study was never in Warden Study, which was done last two, twenty eighteen, and so therefore it's not being protected, and it's probably a cul-de-sac well. And the other is still Colton Family Cemetery. I'm still waiting for, find out when we're gonna, how we're gonna restore the half acre to the cemetery.
Okay. Now we'll get into our, our first regularly scheduled item, which is National Builders LP, Van Lompe Trucking Court, one thirty-four Neely Town Road Warehouse, SEU permit in a site plan. This is a continuation of a public hearing. Charlie Buzitlow will give us an update on where we're at with the project. Hi.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Charlie Buzitlow. I'm outside counsel for National Builders LP. We're here, as the chairman just said, for continuation of our public hearing on a proposal for a three hundred twelve thousand, five hundred square foot warehouse facility. It's located on, actually, on one thirty-four Neely Town Road. The lot was composed on, was created by a subdivision off of the property that you probably all would identify as a storage town facility. We've been working on the project for quite a bit of time, and I believe the board has received information in response to engineering comments, and we recently, today, received some comments from the landscape architect. And if it's okay, we'll have Dave Young from Chasin just run through the status where we legal act with all of these issues. And then continuing the public hearing.
Just real quick, we did receive landscaping comments today. There wasn't anything that was earth-shattering in that, in that set of comments. Basically looking to have some of the trees traded out for something that was more native to the area, things along that line. We have submitted to the Orange County Department of Public Works. We've received two sets of comments from them. We've responded a second time now, and we're pretty close to satisfying what they're looking for. We did send in the engineering response letter to Andy's comments. That was on the fifth. And we have the lighting, I wouldn't say resolved, but we're gonna be submitting that within the next couple of days. So we have all the information. We're just waiting for the manufacturer to send us some of the Candelab tabulations that Mr. Kelly likes to see with the seminals.
Okay.
So as soon as we get that in, that'll be into him.
Okay.
And, and that's pretty much where we're at. The archeology's been approved, sound study's been submitted, traffic study's been updated as the DPW one C, and we sent that into them. And we pretty much addressed things.
Okay.
So that's where we stand.
Okay. Thank you. This is a continuation of a public hearing, so we'll open the floor for public comments and questions. And if you could please just identify yourself for the record. Appreciate it. Anybody got any comments on one thirty-four Neely Town? Yes, Fred?
Fred Mertz, Village of Montgomery. Question I have is about the, the traffic study. Did you incorporate the existing traffic that's on Neely Town Road when you did your study? Or is just your plan of yourself, how many trucks you're gonna put on the road, as opposed, as opposed to all the other ones that are there? And also, the wetlands behind it, was that, was that ever addressed?
Wetlands behind, to the north and to the south. There's two sets of wetlands.
Or am I thinking of the wrong project?
Well, the DEC wetlands, we've got a hundred-foot buffer, and we're not going into that. And the core of engineers' wetlands has been submitted for an isolation call.
I mean, I deal with all the amount of rain right now, to take, take a look at the property again and see the effects of a huge amount of rain like we have. Thank you.
I think he's referring to the photos that were brought to the last meeting.
Yes.
I think you guys walked the site.
Yes, Jay, you had an opportunity to go out to...
That's right. We went with Blaine. We went out to the site. You show this where water flows. And then I came back and I got in my geographic information system, the topo and prepared a map. It's not on this computer, it's on my hard drive at home, but I'm gonna send it to Blaine.
Okay.
And so we can take a look at it too. Based on the topo, it looks like the bulk of the flow from the site goes into the wetlands to the south. That wetland does empty into a stream that winds its way down through the, all those properties surrounding Blaine's house. A little bit of flow comes off of, right, right here.
Yeah.
A little bit of flow runs off and comes down here, and that works its way this way and then down over here.
Okay.
Oops. The, according to the topo. So Rose and I are gonna make, make an appointment, go out and ground truth it.
Okay. With your map?
That's the map.
Okay. Okay, great. Anyone else on the Neely Town project?
Yes.
Yeah, Blaine. Hi.
Blaine Patel, Conlon Lane. A little bit of water that you're talking about coming over my property is here. Okay. The second thing I'd like to say is, the first time we spoke, there was no talk of blasting. The last time, it was more positive that there was blasting. Every house in the town, in Conlon Lane, has wells and basements.
Okay.
When was this photo taken? When was this taken?
This storm plant has run under water three times in my life. That water comes from that property.
That ground, this is on Aristotle.
Jay, do you think that's the water that ran from the north, from that northeast side?
There's, there's just a small, little...
Is that what that's coming from?
No, no. That, that water comes from this, it's coming off the, off the hillside, down that creek, and then it floods, floods your property.
The house at the bottom of the hill.
Yeah.
Did it change?
Oh, that one down east, like, yeah. It's like down here somewhere.
Yes.
Yes. But that water's coming from, from there.
So all this wetland here, sorry about that. All the way, it gets worse and gets better. All that, all this wetland is big wetland, state wetland, which means it's over, it's over five acres, twelve hectares, it goes like. All drains into that creek, the unnamed creek that goes down through your property.
The creek that I'm showing you is the other one, by the trooper's barracks, coming back to meet up with that.
Over in here?
Right.
Yeah, comes back in this way, and it meets, yeah, it meets the other creek right here, and then it goes underneath the road, right underneath the sewer.
That's where that meets up to the other one.
Okay.
Yeah. Fred, just, just let you know, when you had sent out that summary of your field walk, we had prepared a response to that and showed that that drainage design point is actually having water reduced to it. So it's actually improving conditions flowing off of our site. But the wetlands you're talking about is really off of our site, as Andy showed you in the previous meeting.
So this point right here, this north, northeast corner,
Yeah.
has gotten less water than presently, the way you've laid out the site.
Right.
More water goes into these two ponds here, and then work their way into this big wetland.
Right.
And into the creek that goes down the hill.
That's correct. And...
So you're trying to, you're trying to keep water from going this way, a little more will go directly.
Right. But it'll be metered, and it'll be filtered, and it'll be metered over time, so there's not a, a huge amount going at the, at one point. It'll be a gradual discharge.
Okay. Well, it's not allowed to come out of that property any faster than it does today.
Correct.
The rate has to be what it is now.
Correct.
So you have to detain the water or retain it before it leaves your property.
And specifically in that corner, we had pointed out in our response that we submitted to, there were three point oh one acres tributary to that corner in the pre-development, and it's only one point one four acres in the developed condition. So we're capturing, you know, one, one and three-quarters acres and putting it into the stormwater system and then discharging it over time.
Okay. Any other questions by the public? Yes, John?
As you know, I've brought up questions before about flooding and rate and volume. And we all know about our stormwater law, which unfortunately has a flaw in it, that it relies on state regulations to only control the rate. But when you have a restrained area like those ponds and wetlands, the total volume over time will increase the size of those wetlands and/or ponds and the duration of flooding, even if you've controlled the rate. So I would suggest, if you really wanna get a handle on it, to ask the applicant how much total water is coming off his site pre-development and post-development, not just the rate. So that's a concern that I've expressed many times, and hopefully, we will get the stormwater law corrected to prevent people from getting flooded out. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, board, any comments, questions? Yes, Ryan?
I think at the last meeting, we asked for an updated wetland validation map. Didn't see that come in yet. I don't know, did you send that? Did you get the updated validation map for the wetlands?
For the DEC wetlands?
Yes.
Yes. That's been submitted to the town.
Okay. I didn't see that yet.
The date is two thousand thirteen, I think. We, we had to get it validated in the very first part of this project. And as, as a result of that, we actually increased the boundary along the south a little bit. And that's been validated and signed off by DEC, and that's been submitted. I'll, I'll make sure and send it in again tomorrow, but...
Anything else, board? Questions?
Was, was there a letter submitted by the village in April?
Yes.
That they responded to in the last.
And the submission we got on Wednesday, which Wednesday, the fifth.
Yep.
Dave, what was the date of that wetlands validation?
I don't have it with me, but I can get that to you. It's, it's good. It was signed in eighteen, and it's good for five years, so it expires in two thousand twenty-three. But I'll, I'll send that in to Sue tomorrow.
That's not part of the plan set?
No, it's, it's been submitted previously, but...
As, as part of this set?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else, board? Questions, comments?
They're still looking at this, I guess.
Yeah. What had happened was, from the original plan he had looked at, he had signed off on, but the lighting fixtures changed. So he needs to look at them again, make sure that they're, what he had before, the same performances he's had before. Bill's looking at it. We got landscaping comments this, this afternoon, today sometime.
Right.
From Karen. Okay, and we got the new plans, the updated plans, and a comment letter that referred to the village letter in our comments. We got that then too, last Wednesday. Any other comments on one thirty-four Neely Town?
I will just say that we're gonna stay to the same level of lighting that was approved previously from, submitted to Bill.
Okay. All right.
Tomorrow or Wednesday, whenever we get...
And he's gonna have that soon?
Yeah.
This week?
Yeah, we've got the, we're just waiting on the manufacturer to give us the Candelab tabulations that he wants to see.
Okay. Yes, Kristen, you had a question?
Yeah. So if I was listening to that right, the wetlands, the wetlands validation report, as you called it, is that going to delineate where the wetlands are on site?
Yes.
Okay. If there's increased development around this location, wouldn't that increase the potential amount of water on the site, which could increase the size of the wetlands? If that report's done from two thousand eighteen...
It's a map.
Okay, if that map's done in two thousand eighteen, I mean, couldn't it conceivably be larger than what's mapped out two years ago versus asking for a new determination?
Was it revalidated in two thousand?
It was revalidated in two thousand eighteen, and that's the way DEC does these maps.
They don't re-map them, re-flag them?
Every five years, they have to be re-flagged out by a delineator, and then DEC has to go out and concur with what is flagged out.
I would just...
So basically, they check them every five years.
This is a field check. They don't do it from the office. Say a guy should go out in the field.
Right.
Right. I would just be nervous with what's happened with increased development around the area. If that's changed in the last two years, you're gonna have increased water on that site compared to what's on those maps.
But, but again, we have a hundred-foot setback that we have to stay out of anyway, so we're not even anywhere as close to the wetlands.
That's great, but if your, if your amount of water is a hundred feet farther back and away from these houses that are adjacent to the site, then that still matters, depending on how much water is on the site. Just saying, I would suggest a new flagging, but that's your call.
Well, the DEC will, will, they validate it every five, so they have to do it. That's the, the law.
And we re-flagged this, like I said, we had to expand it a little bit because there's been some areas that have been inundated. So we expanded it in eighteen, and that's just a funny thing.
Anyone else? All right, so there, there's some, we have the plans to look at. We, we owe you a comment letter and comments on them, and we all need to see that. So I would suggest that we come to the next meeting on the twenty... So I would suggest that we come to the next meeting on the twenty-fourth. Does that sound okay to everyone? Um, and this will be everyone in the rooms, this will be your notice, this, you won't get a, any, uh, any card in the mail. So we, we already have one hearing on the twenty-fourth, um, I'm gonna suggest this at seven, uh, thirty-five, Monday, February, uh, twenty-fourth, twenty twenty in this room. I have a motion for that by John, seconded by Rose, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair, if I could just ask, for the twenty-fourth, uh, would it be possible for you to direct the consultants to prepare a draft of a, uh, I believe the secret net deck? I, I believe that we've addressed all the questions, uh, particularly from the environmental part of you, and it would be helpful if at least there was a draft available at that meeting on the twenty-fourth.
I, I don't think I'll direct, it's too early to tell, we haven't gotten our consultants' comments back yet, we wanna make sure that our, all the Ts are crossing, the Is are dotted. And, um, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have another site visit. With a, with a map, a couple of board members with neighbors who wanna have that too. So, um, I don't, I can't commit to anything at this point, but, um, we'll continue to work at it. Beautiful?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, uh, next this evening, we have Bracken Road Properties, Bracken Twenty warehouses, Bracken Road Lenders Drive, S U permit, site plan and two lot subdivision, it's a continuation of a public hearing. Um, Bracken Twenty. Okay, uh, Dave, you have any updates? I know we got plans up last Wednesday too on this, I believe, right?
Uh, no.
Did you submit new plans?
No, we've received engineering comments since last week. Um, and there was, uh, like twenty comments on there. Um, a lot of them were, uh, basically, you know, you missed the contour label here or, um, the contour was partially missing, those kind of things. Uh, there was one question though about the very initial, um, time of concentration calculations, uh, which Andy put forward to us. And we've adjusted the drainage caps based on that. And the one in the ten year storms were still fine, but the Clonardere Storm had to have a slight, uh, did have a slight increase, so we've got to adjust our plans for that. It was about a one point two C F S increase over the pre-development rate, so, um, we're working on that. Um, hoping to have that into the town this week. The, uh, fire department, uh, was one issue that was on there also, those were the two main issues in the letter. Um, the fire department, um, as you know, we've had, um, numerous correspondents, some to them. Um, I believe you've spoken with Mr. Reynolds.
Yes.
The, the way we've got it laid out is that you have to have a hundred and fifty foot hose pool from wherever you're fighting a fire from. And that's if you don't have a sprinkler system. Now, it can get greatly increased depending on the fire official in the town, if you do have a sprinkler system, which of course these buildings do. But what we did was we tried to get the, um, the areas beside the building close enough to be within that hundred and fifty foot, either direction. The east wall of the, uh, eighty thousand square foot building is about three hundred and forty feet in length. So what we've done is added some, uh, area down to the southeast corner and some, uh, grid on the eighty thousand square foot building, the other one there.
Oh, okay.
On the southeast corner as well as the northeast corner, we've.
Okay.
Um, we've inserted, uh, the grid support for the lawn area. Uh, we would certainly put in pavement if that was what would satisfy the board. Um, that would allow that three hundred and forty feet to get down underneath the three hundred feet, which would be a hundred and fifty foot pool from either side. So, um, that's what's, what's happened on that side. And then on the other side, um, sixty thousand square foot, that total length on the east side is about three hundred and twenty feet. And we installed the grid down on the southeast corner, as you can see there. And we will probably add some to the northeast corner also. We have a light right there currently, I'm gonna have that moved over so that there is actually, um, fire access on that corner also. Um, but each building has, uh, Siamese connections on both the north and the south face, so that a pumper truck can be connected and supply the sprinkler system with water as needed. And, uh, that's, those are the two main questions that I saw in the engineering comments. I've actually got a letter drafted already and we're gonna try and get those out to you this week.
Okay.
Um, we are waiting on landscaping comments, uh, Sue had asked me for the landscaping plans separately and I submitted those today. Um, Andy was going to supply us with some traffic comments.
I don't think he's gonna have any more, I think that's it.
Okay, but there was some sort of an update to the, um, contribution to the traffic signal? Thought the rate had increased or something like that, when I talked to your.
That's not coming from the town, that's a suggestion, that's a conversation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, just let us know on that.
Well, it's, it's twelve fifty, that's what the number is.
Twelve fifty per movement.
Per movement, yeah. Right. Yeah, that has to change.
Okay, so that, I can't remember what was in our letter, but we had already submitted our suggestion for that. And haven't seen anything approved or disapproved on that, so.
Well, with your letter.
Let me send that to you again?
Sure.
So we're waiting on the landscaping and you have that modification to the stormwater with, because of the hundred foot storm.
Right, right.
Of an increase, so there'll be some modifications there.
Right. Uh, one other question in the letter was, uh, whether or not we'd be asking for a five acre waiver, of course, we will be because we're in excess of five acres. Um, if you want that at this time, we can certainly prepare that and send in. Um, we've had it submitted on, uh, uh, one thirty-four Neely Town for about two years now. Um, so, uh, if you want, now we can send it if, if you want us to wait.
Okay, so what's it gonna look like, I mean, how many acres do you want it to stem?
Well, there's six acres on the sixty thousand and seven acres on the other.
Okay, you think we'll be doing them separately?
Well, right now, this is a combined plan, but when someone comes in as a tenant, then it may separate. There, there is a subdivision associated with this, so it can be split out at that time.
All right, um, this is a continuation of a hearing, we'll entertain comments and questions from the public, anyone have any comments on our questions on Bracken Twenty? Yes, Cherie?
Good evening, Lord, I just have a very quick question. I thought in some of, um, parking, I didn't think we allowed public parking in the front of the building except for a few exceptions. And I don't have my code book, so I'm not quite sure, so pardon me, but I do believe it says no parking in the front. And it appears to be that both are, uh, parking in the front, which is against our code. Thank you.
That parking restriction, I believe, is for, um, certain roads that you classify as collectors and/or other, um, higher volume roads.
I, I don't know, I would have to refer, but when I read the code, I think it's just in generalized parking along the roads. They can be along the side of the building, in the back of the building, but when it comes up front, there are certain distances, clearances and concepts that have to go with that and it's not, not really, I don't believe, um, but again, you have the lawyer, I don't have my book, so if I wasted your time, I apologize.
Anyone else on Bracken Twenty? Yes, Fred?
I have a question about your, the fire system, the hoses, the extra hoses.
No.
What's maintaining the pressure in those hoses? I mean, if you're wa, if you're waiting for a pumper truck to come, then the, that's a delay in, in fighting a fire. And having hot fires and being hot, hot fighting at any point, the faster you get to it, the better you're off. So what is maintaining the pressure until the pumper trucks come?
There are hydrants on the site.
Then I mean, is, is there a water tower or pumps that are gonna maintain that pressure? Cause if you don't have any pressure in the hoses, you're gonna have like dripping water at the very end. So, I mean, I don't know if you consider that part or not, and also, when you're fighting a fire, do you see the closest of the, the wetland right there, the runoff? Where is that gonna be directed to?
You're hooked up to the, uh, the bracket with the firefighting. There's a pond down the street and there's a pump house on the pond. Draws, pumps it out, puts it, pressurizes it, hatches.
Then I'm, I'm just saying, is it just response time and everything else? I mean, I was a member of a fire brigade for twenty-five years. And we were taught that we were the first resort before a fire company ever got in there. Because we knew the plant, we knew the place, we were the best people to put that fire out. So we have a standpipe system where we had maintained, uh, pressure with pumps and as well, as well as the, the pressure drops. We have booster pumps to kick in to help fight that fire. You need that pressure, not just the fl, not just the length, but you need the pressure and the flow in order to be able to fight a fire effectively.
Right, but this is built with suspenders, we got that plus we got a sprinkler system.
Okay, I'm, it also, the, the wetland runoff of the plane of the fire. There's a lot of water and I'm not sure what is being stored there. So, I mean, there's chemicals and everything else that's gonna go right into that wetland when you fight a fire. I just, that kind of discern.
Thank you, anyone else from the audience? Board members, any questions or comments?
Chairman?
Yes, Fred?
Can I take an answer to Dave's question about, uh, fire department wanting to be able to pull hoses on one of the sides of the building? to pull hoses on one of the sides of the building, or item four, or someone else? Something would suggest here?
What the fire chief want, requires is a hard surface to pull the hoses down, correct? Or to park a vehicle.
Right.
It's to bring a vehicle.
Right.
So they don't have to pull so far.
Right.
What that surface is...
That's what I'm putting out to you, that we're, we're installing, um...
Like a grass tree.
A grid system, the grass will go, go through. Or, you know, on the flip side, if you prefer to see a paved surface, that's fine too. We just gotta know what it is you would like.
You have to check with the chief, right, like that.
Yep.
But every chief is different, everything is different.
Well, I wanna be able to find it, the only thing would be if it's, no, I would, I would think. It has to be made, right. Okay, we'll have to check with the chief.
Okay, I can call him, but I don't have much luck.
Why don't you try calling him and let me know if you don't?
Okay.
If you don't get him.
All right, we'll do.
It'd be better to deal with it directly.
All right.
Anyone else on bracket twenty?
Bill was fine with the lighting.
I believe Bill's signed off.
He's already signed off on the lighting on this.
The lighting's good on this. Um, we're waiting on the landscaping from Karen. I did reach out to her after our last hearing, and she's working on, she did give one of them done a couple, but she hasn't gotten to this yet.
Well, she's, she's given us one set of comments, we've responded, and now we're waiting for second.
But will your change in the, in the modification in the stormwater is that gonna affect your landscaping? We don't know, or you don't know that yet?
Well, I mean, the, the area that we're gonna increase is on the, uh, I don't know, on the, um, north side of the attenuation pond number one.
So it's gonna move some landscaping probably?
Right, yeah. So, I mean, it'll move it, but, I mean, what we're looking at there is a total of seventeen feet, um, to the north and to the east.
Increase the area of the pond?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My man?
Yeah.
John A. Hearn, Burke, Miggles, and Don, attorneys for the applicant. I just wanted to ask before you went on, if the board would consider a couple things tonight. First being closing the public hearing, it'll burn some time. Plan hasn't changed much. And the second, as Dave indicated before, most of the issues left are just site plan issues, we would ask for the board to consider a negative declaration on this. They're not big issues, they can be handled in the site plan aspect, and they're not major issues. Thank you.
Okay. Landscaping, the change to the pond. Inquire, to the chief on this. So, I'm gonna suggest we load us up, but I think we come back in on the twenty-fourth, hopefully we, these things are addressed. Okay, these questions? So, seven forty's optimistic, it'll be more like eight o'clock. Down to seven forty on the twenty-fourth, does that make sense, board? Okay, so entertain a motion by John, seconded by Rose, all those in favor signify by saying aye. This is a public's notice that we're gonna continue this one also on February twenty-fourth at seven forty. Thank you. Hi Ross, next this evening is Gisarelli on Bailey Road, is two lot subdivision of the Lansbury subdivision of Lot Ten. It's a continuation of a public hearing that we opened on the twenty-seventh of January this year. Could you could, fill us in?
Good evening, for the record, Ross, with the list of engineering and surveying property here on behalf of Lou Gisarelli, for the proposed two lot subdivision, we were here two weeks ago. There is a, this is an existing lot that has improved house, well, septic location. That actual house is currently under construction. The applicant is proposing a two lot subdivision to put that house on his own property, this is a house for his son, and leaving the remainder property for Lou senior. We were here last meeting, one of the comments of the public was the location of the house on Lot Two. We had relocated that house centered on the lot, which is where it would have to be constructed in accordance with your dwelling relocation, though, without coming back to this board, so we've given it probably seventy-five feet or more, up to the property line when it was previously fifteen feet.
Okay.
That is the only change of significance. Andrew and I have been back and forth about stormwater, I think we're on the same page, and if there's anything minor, we'd be glad to address it.
Okay, um, this is a continuation of a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that has a question, or would like to look at the map? Hi.
Hi. Terry Whitebook, hi. So thank you for moving that, so seventy-five, it is still approximately sixty feet from the road. But it looks like the driveway's on this side of it?
Opposite side of it, yeah.
Uh-huh. And, um, what was that wastewater management, wastewater management question?
Did you re, do another request of the SWIP study on this property?
So was the SWIP, SWIP prepared for the project and reviewed by the engineer for the project?
Didn't have to be re, re-submitted because you moved the house?
Oh, no, it doesn't, because of the way we analyze it, it doesn't change.
And is there still room for a road to make four more houses in back there?
Uh, he would have to relocate some of the improvements that are proposed currently to do that.
Anyone else? More than any comments or questions on Gisarelli? Yes, Ryan?
I haven't seen the new plan here yet, but I took a look at the adjoining dwelling to the right, and I guess that's to the east, and I couldn't tell how far off the street that is, I think it's Miss, uh, this woman's right here. Yeah, it looked like your house was about a hundred feet off the road.
I think that's probably right.
So, we've got her house at a hundred feet, we've got a new house on Lot, Lot Two, it's sixty feet, and you've got Lot One that's back a little bit further, and then the house to the west, landscaping is closer, so we've got like kind of a, the exact here, is there any way we can kinda make that a little bit more uniform?
Um, we're well within the required setbacks, and we've provided, you know, three locations way away from the neighbors' property. At this point, potential, it's kinda, either wanna go to Hill or relocate, we have to come back. Here is the existing residence here, it's roughly the same, a little further back than existing residence. About, say, about five hundred from back, five hundred.
Terry Whitebook, yeah, it, the sixty feet, I mean, I, I kinda walked my neighbors next door just to see, cause his is pretty close compared to mine, and his is over a hundred feet, so that's, that's considerable closer to him.
See Bob Landstuhl's house here?
Uh-huh.
And we're actually further back in boxes.
Oh, this is the neighbor, yeah, yeah, but all the rest of the neighbors on the road are further back.
I think they're, would you go down this way?
Ross, if you, if, if Mr. Gisarelli would ever want to cut another lot out of that, it looks like he'd have to move all of that, wouldn't he?
Either way, if he wants to relocate that house or build something else, he'd have to be back to the board.
He'd have to be back. Now, there probably isn't a way for him to leave the house there and put another house in the back.
Correct.
The way that's set up.
Correct.
And any change in that plan, he'd have to come back.
Correct.
So basically, putting the house in that location cuts, if he's gonna keep it that way, he's not subdividing the rest. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, that's why I explained to him that I had no problem moving it, because if somebody's gonna buy this lot, they're gonna want their house more centered on property. And if he, and if he's ever gonna do anything again, he would have to come back anyway, so.
Even for a relocation, he has to come back?
Yeah, it made sense for both scenarios, I think.
Terry, you understand that?
I do.
So, leave it here, he doesn't subdivide, and if he does, he comes back either way. If he wants to move the house more than twenty percent, then he has to come back. So, I think, follow? So maybe we leave it there and then it doesn't get subdivided, it's done? Cause it is quite a bit of land, right?
Oh, yes, yeah.
And I don't think it's poor soils either, is it?
No, it's all good soils, very good soils, home parks for all these lots of rest.
Okay.
Uh, the total acres is thirty, forty total of that main land.
Yeah, of course, the railroad kinda makes a difference, that's gonna be helped so they don't want, under one ownership. Anyone else in questions, comments?
There's just some legal documentation, how to be done with the dues and things like that, I think Rich was working on that.
Legal documents?
With the remaining land.
Yeah, to go to the health department, so we're really looking forward to making that preliminary. We'll go off to the health department, we've gotta get these septic approved by the health department.
Right, cause it's a subdivision.
We talked about the covenants to change from the entire lot.
So that knowledge would change, and the covenant would have to be changed to reflect it.
Are we okay with the concept of the location of the home? Does that, because, I mean, we, this is the first we've seen this, and, and I, I think we, we'd like to get a submittal so we can all look at it, but I think the concept we're good with, and, but I don't wanna, I don't think we wanna act without it having to happen in front of us just...
Probably this would be better.
Yeah, so, this should be a short one, eight o'clock on the twenty-fourth, and hopefully we can move forward. If that makes sense, everyone, so you'll get us a, you know, a submittal of the copies?
Sure.
Okay? So this is a public's notice that we'll come back in on the twenty-fourth of this month at eight o'clock, to, by then we'll have had the two weeks with it, we shouldn't be able to, uh, all entertain a motion. Motion by Rich, seconded by Jay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Ross.
Thank you.
Next this evening in Medline, Montgomery, this is a draft FDIS completeness discussion, this is a board's completeness discussion on Medline, I should say. Okay, um, how about an update, Eric?
Okay, Larry Wilinsky for the applicant, with me is Kelly Ash from Kinneland, and Mike Youngkins, both from, are engineers dealing with stormwater and wastewater. Update is as follows, um, just a little history first, we've, we submitted, originally submitted the FDIS for review by the board on, in October, October twenty-second. So we're about four months into this thing now, we're almost four months into this thing. And we've been going back and forth with comments from consultants and board members. We believe that, that we have answered virtually everything substantive that would entitle this thing to be accepted as complete. We did get a, um, we did get a seven-page, um, comment letter from Bonnie Friday morning, and we worked all weekend to turn that around, and it's, it came to you today. So, but the reason it came to you today is because we got it on Friday, okay? So, um, really, what I'd like to accomplish tonight is, you know, if the board is, is not able, or is, does not feel comfortable in accepting the FDIS tonight, getting a firm schedule down, understanding what comments are left to come forward from board members, I'm going to assume the consultant comments, I believe we've addressed at this point. And, uh, and then if, if there are more comments to come from the board, we'll turn those around quickly, and what we would do is then request, and immediately request a consultants' meeting to sit down with the entire document, and make sure you're all comfortable, uh, with everything then, so that it can be accepted as complete, it's time.
Okay. Once this is complete, the seeker has specific guidelines as to numbers of days that we're gonna have to, to go through a findings, and a public comment and then a findings. Have you thought about the timing on that? Once it's complete, how many days are we gonna let the public have? How many days are we gonna have?
Let, let me clarify something, because, um, there's no such thing as a public comment period at the time of the final environmental impact statement. And I invite you all to give DEC a call if you think I'm up here telling you something that is not correct. It's a consideration period. Now, the public can submit comments, but the main purpose is for the lead agency and the involved agency to consider the FDIS in advance of issuing its findings. So, so, I have no problem with, as you're well aware, the statute provides ten days. I have no problem with extending that, because, you know, it's a, it's a big project and a large document, there's a lot of information. So I would anticipate doubling that time to twenty days.
What do we do, what do we do on selfish?
Twenty, 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 twenty on selfish. But then, the findings is normally thirty after the FDIS is complete, correct?
Yeah, the findings, the findings, um, the findings is thirty, but that can be extended.
Right, and then, and that's what happened with selfish, that went, that went a bit longer than the thirty. And we had asked for and received, I believe we, we had gotten permission or direction from the applicant to move that further out, I believe.
I think it was a couple of months.
Yeah. So, we had gotten a list of responses to our comments on last Wednesday, the fifth, I think?
Uh, that sounds right, the fifth.
Yeah, okay, and then, um... So, we're just getting into that, and I know that there is a couple of, um, there's some members that do wanna make comments and get, and get comments in and back to you as soon as they can. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, can we target a date for that, for the, a deadline for those comments to come in to us?
I'm planning on everything written by Wednesday.
By Wednesday?
Right, I hear that.
Till the twelfth?
That's Wednesday.
Wednesday. Is that reasonable?
No.
That's for our board?
For the public, right?
No.
No, well...
No. Thursday?
I'm doing my best, I don't wanna hold up the process. If I should extend over into the public's twenty days or whatever, with some comments, I'll try to get in most of them before then.
Okay, if you could have your comments in with Ryan's, mine are, mine aren't resolved, and then, so that by Wednesday, by end of business Wednesday? Okay, okay.
I don't know about by end of business, but...
But, okay.
But...
By Thursday morning. By it, by, by twelve oh one AM?
Our comments.
I, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm trying to, you know, move this along, it's four months. And four months is a long time for an FDIS consideration.
It's a million square foot project. Jesus. It's not a little warehouse.
Um, by... To...
Excuse me?
Twelve. Okay. So, our comments will get to you by the twelfth. Is there, is there benefit in having a consultants' meeting, I'll ask the consultants?
I think it's pretty clear. I think the comments are pretty clear. If they want, we could do it.
Uh, we have to know that, we have to know that the comments were adequately addressed.
Right.
And, and the kind, and the consultants' meeting that I'm anticipating is one where we have the entire document, and make sure that, that those...
I think we can get a plan if we remember there.
I mean, respond, under secret, the responsibility of a board in accepting an FDIS is to ensure the accuracy of the information and the adequacy of the job that was done. And, and so that, uh, so that it can be closed out and there can be a basis for findings and deliberation, which is where the real decision-making process takes place.
Okay, so if we, if there's a meeting, you get it on the twelfth, you wanna have a meeting, you'll turn them around and...
We'll turn them around, well, depending on how much more we're getting, which I can't, can't fathom would be, you know, significant, um, at this point. But, um, we, we'll turn them around with, uh, within two or three days.
Okay, so then, then we're, twelfth then, we're into the following week, and it's a holiday week, weekend, President's Weekend on Monday. I, I don't know how the rest of the board, while I'm trying to, you're gonna be here the twenty-fourth anyway.
Well, we had a question about that, when we were at the last meeting, you scheduled it for the twenty-second.
I missed it all.
Oh, okay.
It's the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, okay, you have us on for the twenty-fourth.
Have you on for the twenty-fourth to continue with our, the public hearing on the, on the site plan? So, why don't we just, the twenty-fourth, it's, it's a, it's a quicker process, and that'll catch our breath a little bit, and we'll have, we'll know with a number of days, not just a couple, that the document is in really good shape.
Okay.
So if you wanna schedule a consultants' meeting after the seventeenth, the eighteenth or so, we'll have the rest of that week, is that...
Seventeenth or the eighteenth would be, or nineteenth would be fine with any of us.
For a consultants' meeting? Seventeenth, oh, I'm sorry.
Eighteenth or the nineteenth, wherever's good for you guys. Richard, you're, you're away?
Yeah.
By the way, Mr. Wilinsky's correct, we have to call the DEC, it's a minimum ten-day period for the, in which the public can comment, it's interesting, in which the public can consider, it doesn't even use the word comment. The board obviously will take written testimonies from the folks, but there isn't technically a public hearing on an FDIS.
Correct, okay. Our comments in this week, consultants' meeting on the nineteenth, and then we'll look to, hopefully we'll be there...
Hopefully be in a good position.
On the twenty-fourth.
I won't say the word, but I'll say the good position.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
It's two weeks from tonight, and it'll be a public hearing in, here, on a subject, on, not that subject, but on the site plan for the public, so we'll see you all in two weeks. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, Larry, you want a time for the nineteenth? Ten AM.
Ten AM on the nineteenth. Do your board members have a year or two?
Uh, the nineteenth.
The nineteenth?
I can wait for that.
Yeah, unless you're bored, I'm gonna do it.
Ten AM on the nineteenth, right?
Yes. Okay. Sure.
I'm just wondering, in, in your last work session meeting, you had another applicant where you described everything going through with them and their instances, and one of the things you said was there'll be no manufacturing, and I'm just wondering if that language or those words will be used in the Medline application, that there will be no manufacturing, whether they have committed?
It's already in there.
Is it one...
It's in there. Three, four, five letters.
Okay, verification, sir, you said the site plan public was set for the twenty-fourth hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, next this evening, Doyle Staples, New York State, group two oh eight, lot line change approval, extension requests, we've had three ninety-day extensions, it expires tonight, it would go out to May eleventh, twenty twenty. We have the letter from Dominic Gisari? Okay? Any discussion on Doyle Staples?
What are they waiting for, just a lot line change, right, sir?
They've been dragging their feet on everything, I'm just thinking, probably doing deeds or something. So I've been, uh, we've been, we've waited on stuff. Additional time is needed to finalize a platform signature, so we're gonna have to get a paper copy and we're gonna have to check in, and, and before signature. So, I'm, I'm gonna motion to grant the ninety-day extension to May eleventh of twenty twenty. So, I entertain a motion to grant the 90-day extension to May 11th of 2020. Motion by Rose, seconded by Ryan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, next, Alori Brothers, Stone Castle Road. It was approved in July of 2011. There's been 14 six-month extensions and, okay? It expires tonight again. Let's see, their applicant is marketing the parcel. Any discussion on Alori?
Why are you talking about giving Alori extension?
Because they didn't have the form.
We got it now, right?
Yeah. So, we're going out six months now.
Now, we'll go out six months, out to August 10th. A motion to grant the extension by Rose, seconded by Rich, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Red Birch Inc., New York State Route 17K, ICU permit and site plan approval. Got the first one in 17 already, 18 months. Uh, there's been three six-month extensions granted, expires on the 13th this week. They need another, they'd like another six months out to August 13th. Marketing the site again.
Just in your check, we're actively reviewing another application, that's a, right?
Yeah.
And while I appreciate that I don't know where that second one is going, I wonder if you, should be so liberal with an extension, because pretty much, you know, they should pretty much figure out which plan they wanna pursue. We really should avoid having two applications in front of us for the same property. And I don't, it'd be fair to pull the rug out from under and you should know this, but, and you can go out six months if you'd like, I'm just pointing out to you, unlike the others. In fact, we just got a.
We just got a submission on Red Birch, they changing it because they couldn't, they had too much self-storage, they had a couple small, 35,000 square foot building, something like that. What do you think, you wanna go out three or go out six?
Let's go out three.
Three.
I think that's a good idea, because we'll know by then, hopefully, they will, but they're up there.
It seems like they're moving along, but nowhere.
Yeah, and as we approach approving the other, if you do, the second one, we're gonna ask them to withdraw the first one.
Yeah.
It's probably the premature asking.
Do it now, yeah. Within three months, we're involved. Okay, so, entertain a motion to grant a three-month extension for Red Birch to May. By Jay, seconded by John, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we've got approval of the September 11th, 2018 planning board meeting minutes. Anybody have anything in substance, minutes? I didn't have anything too much of an extraordinary.
Great job, folks, what a, please have the 40-some days.
So, you did that, the novel? So, you did that? Good job.
Yeah.
Good job.
I don't get that, I'm staying because I just, just got it tonight.
What's that?
This, minutes, like.
Okay. Um, any discussion on the September 11th, 2018 minutes?
Uh, I have to stay, also, because I have 84 square.
Okay. We have four. We can manage.
You guys were here?
Yeah. Motion to approval by Rose, seconded by Ryan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approval of October 29th, 2018, planning board meeting minutes. Rich had a couple of corrections.
Just minor stuff.
Minor stuff. We have enough people who were here. Anyone else? Motion to accept, to approve the 20, October 29th, 2018 minutes by Ryan, seconded by Rich, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Approval of the August 12th, 2019 minutes.
Sue, did you understand?
Yeah, yeah, I can get it.
Just, I wanna flag for the board on page two, we had actually recessed the selfish hearing because it was going on so long with other hearings. So, if I'm on page two, I'd just kind of help sue out with, we recessed the hearing, we didn't adjourn it, and we came back to it and we're gonna show that. And both segments of that hearing were transcribed, I believe, and they were transmitted.
Yes.
So, I just wanted to note that. That was my only real substantive change, the rest were just spelled.
Okay. Motion to approve, August 12th, 2019 minutes by Ryan, seconded by John, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And approval of the December 9th, 2019 minutes.
I had made an addition to it.
Okay.
There was an honorable section, and I filled it in.
Okay. Very good. Right? Anyone else? Okay. Motion to approve, December 9th, 2019, by Rich, seconded by Ryan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion to adjourn. Ryan, seconded by Rose, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you, everybody.